Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is certified by the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation under God, indivisible, free, open, and just.
Yeah, that's very helpful. So, you might notice a slight difference today in that Dr. Harrison, the superintendent of schools, is not feeling 100 percent, and he's human too, just like the rest of us, so we gave him the night off to go heal and recover, and I hope he feels better in the morning, or even tonight. And Carol, thank you for coming. You won't hear from her much because she's lost her voice.
Tuberculosis.
There you have it. She did speak, if anyone noticed. But yeah, I just want to credit you with doing so much right now in terms of this Capital Project work and our annual budget and so many other activities that you're doing. Wow. Thank you, Doreen, for stepping in because we are looking for a new district clerk and you have a new treasurer, so you're managing a lot in challenging circumstances and without a voice on top of it all. With Chris not here, I'd like to add to our agenda. A conversation's long been on my mind, and I think one that'll stir a lot of controversy, which has been a real struggle for me in our district, that we don't use the Oxford comma. And I'm hoping tonight that we have a chance to... That's the comma that goes in between, you know, food, service, comma, and, you know... No one's interested in that conversation tonight?
[laughing]
Anyways, it bugs me. If you want to write in about it, I would ask that we add that to the agenda in the future. But a petition, anything like that would be great. I also want to announce, I was asked, it was written, thank you, that there's a great fundraiser this Saturday by the Village Group Face, Janis Joplin Concert, not the actual Janis Joplin, will be at the Town Hall Theater. I believe it's 7:00, 7:30, anyone know? I'll be there. So, there you have it. And with that, we will move to our one and only discussion topic for tonight, which is an update about our Capital Project recommendations. We've had some great input from our community, and we've had a lot of diligent work by our Buildings and Grounds Committee, includes trustees, members, well, of our staff and our professional partners. And so, we appreciate everyone who's come out tonight, and we look forward to some updates on, we heard two weeks ago about our, sort of the, we'd had pieces, bits and pieces, but we heard the whole presentation of the proposed Capital Project, and since then, we've looked to make some adjustments, and we'll hear about that work tonight. So, I'll turn it over to...
I think I'm going to take it.
Deb, thank you.
All right. Hi, everybody. So, for those of you I haven't met, I'm Deb Hargraves, and I'm one of the members of the Buildings and Grounds Committee, along with Maria Kashkin, and actually Brian Freeman, who's not here because he has a combination, I guess, of work obligations and a little bit being under the weather as well. We prepared the presentation tonight to take over where we left off last time. I recognize some of the faces in the audience who were here last time, so we're here to give you an update. We've had a one-week break at school, but we did get some work done while the district was on vacation. So, what we're going to do tonight is really just walk you through the overall approach that we took at Buildings and Grounds to come up with two of the aspects that are in the proposed bond, that being the maintenance facility, and we're going to look a little bit at security. And then, we're going to give this an opportunity for the rest of the board to hear the work that the B&amp;G has done while the rest of us were on vacation, and then, we're going to actually open it up to some questions and comments so that we can hear from you and you can give us some more feedback like you did last Saturday. So, the agenda tonight is put up in front of you, so we're basically going to also take a quick look at the survey data that was gathered earlier. Maybe Maria can take a look, can go over that, or maybe Carol with her voice. We're going to show you the locations that we promised to show you, that we looked at for the facilities building. We're also going to show you some locations for proposed outdoor bathrooms at Dow's Lane because we had talked about that two weeks ago, and then, we're going to give you an overview of the expenses. So, let's begin. The first few slides are in regard to the school quality survey. We thought this was important because we had done this climate survey, and it gives you a perspective of what our students, community members, and staff members value. So, you can see that safety and security was the number-one ranking weighted score of what was important to our community and what to include within the proposed bond. And I don't need to go through each one. I don't know if you want to comment, Maria, about the consistency and how safety and security was ranked number one by both the students, staff, as well as community members.
Pretty much the same thing with the repair and the upgrade of facilities was very high in everyone's mind as well.
For the parents and the community members, a little lower with students, but that's kind of typical.
Moving along, areas that we reviewed for the facilities building, we can just really just jump right into it. Sure. Okay. Okay. So, we're going to take a look at the areas that the Buildings and Grounds Committee reviewed to locate the facilities building. So, we identified them on Slide 6. I'll read them out loud just so that as we go through each slide, you can see which ones we're referring to. We're going to take a look at the track and field area. That's up by the high school, leading to East Field. We're going to show you the theater area we looked at, again, at the high school. Mazaris Field, there were two locations, both front and back of Mazaris. There's a Ferris Street property location, Lower Lower Dow's Lane Field, an area behind the high school and the cafeteria, an area that we had proposed for the Dow's Lane Basketball Court, and we'll talk a little bit about the shared services that we also had meetings with for that location as well. So, on Slide 7, we're going to, this is an overview that we have of the main campus, and we put boxes. There's not numbers or letters, but we can walk you through it. I don't know, Carol, what's the easiest way to do it?
I did use arrows later on to show you.
Okay. So, do you want to take care of it?
As we get to each slide, you'll see an arrow pointing to that spot, so... This slide that shows all of the different locations that we considered. So, now, we'll really go through them one by one.
Can you see it, Carol?
No, this is the wrong order, sorry. Okay. I think I messed up the order a little bit. Oh, yeah, these are just all, no, these are all three schools, I'm sorry, locations.
Right. We'll go through them individually. Go to Slide 10, and it'll start.
So, now, we'll start with the pros and cons of each one.
Okay. You want to go ahead? Okay. Okay. So, we're going to start with, on Slide 10, we're going to look at the track and field area by East Field, and we put forward here the pros of that area. Of course, it's a large area that already existed. The cons are the areas utilized for track and field events, specifically for the shot put in the discus. The area's also very visible to neighbors, and significant drainage issues would need to be addressed in order to add the road and building, and it would result in a much higher cost. So, are we able to see where that East Field area is?
You know, can I just suggest, because it is a little slow, a small, can we just keep Slide number 7 up while we go through this? Just leave it up here, and we could just talk through the pages? What do you think?
Sure, hop in.
We're talking about the area on the far right there.
Do you have a laser pointer?
Here. I got it. So, you're fine. I'm right here.
Those two boxes right there?
Right here.
Right. Okay.
The road that comes up past the high school, right, goes up past here?
It seems to go very far.
The flat area above the parking lot, and then, up the ramp up to where the New East Field is.
Okay. The biggest concern for this area was that there would be significant drainage work that would be needed here. There'd be significant drainage that would be needed, and it would be very costly. So, if you remember when we did East Field, that had significant drainage, and we spent a lot of money putting that drainage in so that, make that field usable. To do that for this portion would be very difficult, and you would need a paved road, which would create even more drainage issues than a field would.
I'm sorry, we have a chance for questions.
It's going to go through them all, and then...
Do you want to take it one at a time?
I think it is, because otherwise, we're going to have to go back.
All right. Okay.
Well, how about we do, let's do it by school. So, let's get through this slide and then take questions, because if we go through every location... So, we're just going to go with school by school. So, we're going to go through these locations first at the campus. We'll open it up to questions after the board has any questions, and then, we'll move on to the other buildings.
If we're going to do it that way, I guess the board and the community is interested to know, you know, is there a recommendation from the committee, because that might preempt a lot?
We should probably go through the whole thing.
You really want to go through the whole thing?
We really?
I just...
I think we should go through it and then answer questions. I think we should go through it, because then, the rest of our questions might be answered.
That's, I mean, that's a concern I have, because I don't want to spend a lot of time on questions that we'll answer in the process.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Let's continue then with the high school. Okay? So, we're just, so, the first location we looked at is by the track and field area, okay, and for the East Field. Our next location we looked at was near the theater gym building. Are you...
Right there.
Okay. The pros of putting the facility in that area is that there's a paved area already exists, so there's easy access. Extension of the existing building would be less intrusive for neighbors. The cons we identified is it would significantly reduce much-needed parking spots. We did explore also possibly putting a garage there, but again, there's a cost factor involved in that. The con is also that you could block egress from the theater building. We'd have to work around emergency exits, and there's also a safety concern because of pedestrian traffic that's in the area.
And, yeah, and also, what we didn't also say, the fence is really on the property line, so you have to be a certain distance away from the property line, so we would really be taking up a good chunk of that parking lot, and we need the parking for the staff.
Okay. Veronica's one of our architects.
And also, just to add, my name's Veronica Barnes, I'm an architect with H2M.
Oh, the drainage.
There's also, there's that detention pond, so there's also significant drainage that's underneath that parking lot currently, so it's something that you've recently installed that you would need to now rework in some other fashion in order to put a building there.
The third location we looked at for the facilities building is near Mazaris Field. There's actually two areas we identified, and Dave is pointing those out now. Again, it's an area that's not currently used. The con is that we would need to relocate drainage that currently exists there. We would block access to the road and to the track. It is a very visible location. You would see it upon approaching the campus. And again, if there was a facility there, you would have trucks mixing with students, community, and also pedestrian use.
The second area, the lower area, the two, would be sort of combining it with the athletic building. That was the plan, but it would make it a very large building. It would create us to have to go even further back into the hill, and we really felt it wasn't viable after we looked at it that way. It still could be, you know, probably done architecturally, but we just didn't feel it was a viable solution.
Okay.
Also, the issues, the drainage issues, the drainage issues are specifically in the upper location, not the lower location. It's only on the smaller location on the top of the field.
Because that's what... We're talking about this area on the top, closest to Riverview Road, because that is the location where, when Mazaris was built, all the drainage, the system that was put in and all the controls, that was built over there. So, if we were to build something there, all of that would have to be moved. And it's also a very small area, because then, it slopes and you're on neighbor's property.
The next area the Buildings and Grounds looked at was the area behind the high school and cafeteria. Exactly. There's, again, there were several spots. They had similar pros and cons associated with each. The pro of that location was that it could be an extension of an existing building, less intrusive for neighbors. It's hidden within the terrain behind. There's a paved area that already exists there, and there are utilities that are close by. The negative for that location is it would potentially reduce parking spots that are already there. They provide parking for staff. We would need to regrade the land. If you've ever been behind this area, you know how much it slopes. You would also know that there's, it's a very rocky, outcrop crop area there. You can enclose a shed that does exist there. I don't know if Dave can point it out, but there is a little area that we presently store some materials in. We looked at that little shed area, but unfortunately, we can't extend that nor enclose it because of vents and pipes that are located there.
Gas lines, specifically.
Yeah. And then, there's also the problem that there are, is a gas line that runs back there. There are utilities and water lines that would compromise the area. And then, we also access, or I should say, the fire department accesses that area for emergency vehicles, so we need to leave some space by code behind the building in order for emergency vehicles to come up.
So, the trucks come up this way and come up to the back of the building, so we can't block that access for them.
And the last negative for that location is the property line. It's an irregular-shaped property line, and there are challenges with that. The next location Buildings and Grounds looked at for the maintenance facility is Ferris Street location. The school district owns property right behind Main Street School on Ferris Street. We took a look over there. There is a vacant lot. It's currently unused by the school district. Some of you may think it's actually village property. It is not. It's school district property. We took a look at the location and thought that if we did build a facility there, and again, this is just a proposed design, nothing that, you know, a draft, I should say, that, nothing that we designed nor approved specifically for the location, but it was a concept. One of the advantages, if we did put a building on Ferris Street, is that it could provide some rooftop access for our kids for a basketball court, and that would remove the current basketball court that's at the Main Street School parking lot, so we saw that as a pro. And then, it would also have room for vehicles inside. The problem with the location, in our opinion, is that it is on Ferris Street, which is a highly-traffic area, especially because the police department is next door. It's highly visible to our neighbors on Ferris Street, a residential street, and it would be more expensive to build based on the preliminary costs that we came up with, both because of the historic district that it's located in, and also because we'd have to keep the exterior and keep it with the rest of the neighborhood. It's not hidden. There's also the other challenge, we thought, is that we know that the Village Theater is considering renovation, and we want the work to somehow be tied together, so to embark on this project at this time without knowing what the Village Theater is doing would also be a challenge. The, that was just for the board and for the audience. That's really, those are the locations that exist up at the high school. We looked at the terrain. We walked the property, both with the entire Buildings and Grounds group, as well as with our architect and construction manager, with an eye towards engineering, and those are the only areas we were able to identify up at the high school. I don't know if the board had questions about any one of the areas before we move on to other school district property.
When you talk about the areas, are they, I mean, we, what's been shared for the location in the original presentation was 3,500 square feet. Is that what we're looking at here, the same size, or what was...
No. No. So, just to backtrack, a lot of the feedback that we received was people wanted to know, how do we get to this recommendation? So, these are all the locations that B&amp;G had looked at, and we, and that's how we got to the original recommendation of the proposed garage at Dow's Lane. So, we kind of took it a step back, and from this, you know, we're trying to look to, as people said, to possibly make two smaller garages at two different locations. That is what we're currently working on, and we have some ideas, but...
So, I mean, I guess, so then, just backtracking, I mean, that's interesting to hear about the two smaller locations. The, so when you're giving the pros and cons, this is prior to that consideration? I mean, again, if we're looking at a smaller, does that change the calculus for any of these, if we're talking about a smaller size?
So, pretty much, the pros and cons that you're seeing here is what the committee worked did prior to making a new recommendation. So, we're just giving you the history, because that was what was asked for.
This is a historical, not reflective of the more recent...
Correct. We're just giving you...
Got it.
Clarify. On the Saturday morning session here, several people asked us to identify, give a list of the places that we located. That's in response to that.
And emails that we...
And other emails, correct. And then, now, we're going to talk about where the new recommendation is or...
Some of the things that we're considering.
Some of the things that are under consideration in response to moving away from back of Dow's Lane.
Possibly, yeah.
And I think the other thing to add is that we reviewed on Saturday with the community is that the way the process works is Buildings and Grounds had met with our administrators, and we listened to what their needs are. We took a look at what the Capital Planning Committee also had said is important for our district to invest in, both for today and long-term, and we walked the property, and we walked it with the professionals to say, if we build something regardless of the size or how much it costs, which locations exist that we could do it at? There's certain codes that we have to comply with. There's certain restrictions. You have to be a certain number of feet away from a classroom, for example. We have to comply with the SED requirements. It's not like building your home. We don't comply with the ARB or the Planning Board or the Village of Irvington. We have another set of rules and regulations that we have to comply with, and that's why we hire professionals who specialize in this area. So, we walked the property, looked at each one of these sites to begin the process of identifying where we could build something to meet our needs. So, these are the locations, the only locations we were able to find at the main campus. Okay? So, then, after we left the main campus, we moved on to Dow's Lane, and for Dow's Lane, there were several considerations, I believe, in the slideshow. Let's see, we started with on page 16, Lower Lower Dow's Field. For those of you that actually ventured down there, there is space down there that we use for recreation, athletics. There is no road that leads down there. The pro for that location for a facility is that we do have available space. It is less utilized than some of our other fields. The con, of course, is that we don't have a driveway. There's not a gravel, even access road. There is, again, neighbors that view the property, so it's not exactly hidden. You would have to drive through a play area to access it and reach it, and it could impact our sports programs, because a bunch of our teams do use that, both on the weekends and during the week.
We have an error here that I wrote very close to school building. That was not, that was an error. I'm sorry.
The other location we looked at is currently where, as we talked about two weeks ago, which is why most of you are here, is the current location of the Dow's Lane Basketball Court. This was an area that is already paved, so that was a positive factor. The building would use less footprint than the existing basketball court. It would actually be smaller than the court. We were told by those we consulted that a location here would not impact any of the trees. We wouldn't have to remove any, in other words. It is a sunken area, so it is less visible to many neighbors, although we understand from those of you here that some neighbors could see that spot. It is large enough for a facility's equipment, including having vehicles parked within it. There's also large enough space that we could incorporate PTSA supplies and other storage that, needs that we had. We would have to relocate the basketball court if that's what the board and community felt was necessary, but we were able to identify another location, which is where the old trailers were, which is one of the other areas there that we could relocate the basketball court to. We thought that was an attractive idea, because it puts the basketball court closer to our fields, better visibility, certainly during the school day, so that we have monitors and aides who could keep an eye on our kids while they're on the courts, unlike now. We recognized that there's a walking path for commuters that was down there, but we were told by the architects we could work around that and keep a path, because we weren't taking up the entire area. The other advantage was that it's close to utilities. Because the trailers existed there previously, there's actually sewer lines, water lines, so that was also a feature. The con is we were concerned about the trees and other vegetation. We recognized that we'd be losing some open space, but again, it wasn't highly visible. We recognized that the commuters do walk to the train station, but like I said, we were told we could still incorporate that, and we did know that we were going to have to consider what to do with the basketball court.
I will also add that we did look, we did look at putting the building on the place where we're proposing, we were proposing to put the new basketball court, but we felt that that would be really visible and would be too close to the kids playing in the playground. So, we quickly discounted that property. So, I didn't spend a lot of time with the pros and cons on that one, because we just quickly discounted that.
Yeah, especially since the trailers were there before, and we went to Great Luntz to remove the trailers, because we'd listened to the community last time, that that was not an area that we wanted to have a large structure on. So, to go back and build a maintenance facility in the same spot, we discounted early on, so you're not going to see a slide for that one. The last consideration we put on Slide 18 is that we did have several meetings with the village, as well as we located property, both on Columbia University, which is in Irvington. We also saw property at Immaculate Conception Church. The meetings, I would say, we were not fruitful in the sense that while the village has a need and we have a need, we didn't see the timeframe working in our advantage. But I would say that it's, conversations always continue on that front. So, feedback. We put this together based on the letters that we received and the comments that we heard at the last meeting. I don't need to read them. I think most of you are here because you do have concerns, but we recognize that at the Dow's Lane facility, the greatest concern is a loss of open space, and then, the different impacts that a facility such as that would have on the community and the students and the environment. I think at this point, Michael, I'm looking to you, because we're kind of ad libbing this as we go, what, how do you want to approach it? Would you like to hear from different board members' questions or the community?
Well, what does Slide 21 here have? I mean, do we want to go there, or do you want to stick to questions about your historical review of other locations first? I mean, that's what we just...
That's what we just did.
Right. So, we'd be asking questions about your prior work.
So...
Can we just cut to it?
Yeah.
We don't, there's no, we don't have...
Is there a way to do that, or is that skipping something?
We don't have a recommendation. Right now, we are working on, let's, to make this easy, go back to Slide 7. Oh, wait, do we have a slide for this purposely? I'm sorry. No.
I mean, what is...
Oh. Sorry, 20. So, right now, currently, we're working on trying to divide and put two smaller sheds, one at Dow's and one up at the campus. It will not have, it won't be used for storage of vehicles. The one at the campus will be big enough to bring a vehicle in for them to do some of the work that they need to do, like, for example, this last storm. Gary, help me out with the technical words. The pistons on the plow, they needed to be replaced because it wasn't working. I don't know what a piston is, but we'll just go with that. So, it'll give them an opportunity to work on vehicles when it's bad weather outside, but primarily, it's to store all of our equipment, because technically, we cannot, which is one of the reasons why we can't add to the building, you cannot store these products next to classrooms. They're, again, talking about SED requirements, so that's why it's got to be a standalone building. So, currently, we are looking into, this shaded-out area represents the area that will need to be regraded anyway for the fire trucks. So, this is how they would get into the back of the school if there was a fire at the science wing or the lunchroom. And so, a much smaller garage shed, I should say, would be built here. It would be, this is a hill, this is a pretty steep slope here. We know there's rock, and so, the back end of this shed would be kind of built into the hill. So, that is right now what we're working on, right now, costs and figuring certain things out, utilities and all of that, but it would not, it's not a place to work on the vehicles, change oils, do any of that. This is really just for storage.
No, Maria, we did talk about having at least one bay in there where a vehicle could be parked, so that we could work on a vehicle and change pistons and do things like that.
Right, but in terms of...
But we wouldn't be looking to, if anything, we would be able to park one vehicle overnight.
Right.
Not all of our vehicles, but we would at least be able to have a spot for one vehicle.
Well, that's what I said, just to service.
A service bay, and then, we would have enough room on the rest of the building, depending on the size that we could get there, and that's what we're still trying to work through.
To store the rest of the equipment.
To store the other equipment that needs to be stored, that has gas in it and that we can't store indoors in a school building, so to at least protect it. So, that's the plan. We also talked about the idea that the parking spaces, because we were afraid of losing parking, because it's... because it is a big problem for us to have not, no parking. But we figured if, if the doors were positioned correctly, we could use those spaces during the day at least and then move them, it would be facility cars only that we know we could move. And then we'd still be able to get in and out of the building as we needed because we would have access to the facility vehicles. It wouldn't be open to other people, but we wouldn't lose those spots because right now, some of the custodians are parking in that area. So we originally thought we would lose parking, but now we're thinking, the architects are relooking that for us and they're saying, well, we could probably be creative and not lose the parking. So that's where we're going right now. But what remains to be seen is how far back and, and to the left we would have to go and how much of that hill we would have to cut into in order to make this a viable option. So that's really what we, so it would be smaller, but it would be serviceable.
So in answer to your question, um, the original location at Dow's Lane would address all of our needs. We'd be able to both park our vehicles, store our vehicles, store maintenance supplies, provide an office, provide PTSA storage. And we would be looking in the future, being able to comprehensively address all of our needs. We've heard the community. We understand the challenges that exist for the community for a facility at Dow's Lane. So presently, where we're at is we believe, as Carol and Maria just pointed out, that this location behind the middle, middle school and high school area can address some of our needs, not all of our needs. The location at Dow's Lane would have been over three thousand square feet. The maximum amount we believe we could build behind the high school and still stay within our budget is eleven hundred and twenty-five square feet. The biggest loss we have in going behind the middle school and high school area is that we're not allowed to store the vehicles inside. We're really looking at an area that would be able to service a vehicle so we can get our grounds crew out of the elements and inside when a vehicle or a piece of equipment breaks down. But we, we would have more storage space than we do today. And it is a huge advantage for our custodial crew. We believe we need to provide this area to them. They've gone for a very long time without a garage or any area to work. And for this capital bond, we feel very strongly that we need to build something. I think we could go to slide twenty-one. It gives you a little bit of the pros and cons of the area. The area is already paved, so that is, you know, a help. It is an area, again, that's a little less intrusive than some of the other sites. By working on this area, it would allow us to get emergency vehicles in there more easily because we're going to take a look at the entrance and exit. We wanted to do that now for a while. As I indicated, it has enough room to work on the vehicles and store some of the smaller gas-powered equipment, which is important because we cannot store any gas-powered equipment anywhere at the moment, and we need to do that. And we won't lose parking, which we were concerned about, if we design it in a certain way so that the facility staff can park there, maybe not permanently, but it's still, we're not going to lose the spot. The con is the excavation, and we were concerned about that from the start, both in removing the soil as well as cutting into rock. It is costly. It's going to cost a lot more than the Dow's Lane facility in that regard. We don't have exact numbers, but Veronica can speak to that a little bit in a few minutes, if, if the board thinks it's necessary. And because it won't address all of our needs, again, it would, the maximum we think we can get is eleven hundred and twenty-five square feet, we would still need to provide some type of storage at Dow's Lane for our custodial crew.
And do you, is that, are we, are there suggestions for that Dow's Lane storage shed?
There are.
I saw the bathroom is that-
So, again. Do you want us to continue?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're killing it right now.
So I think before heading to the bathrooms, which is another area, we told the community we'd update you on it. If you go to page twenty-five, the Dow's Lane storage that currently exists is one of the old trailers and it has passed its useful life. We do use it presently both for PTSA storage and storage for small equipment, but we believe that in connection with this capital bond, we're going to have to remove it. And that allowance that we've put aside is thirty-two hundred dollars. We will need to purchase a new facility and that's estimated eighty-eight thousand dollars. That will allow our crew to store small equipment and it would also provide storage for the PTSA.
No, no, PTSA, no. We would, they would be in Dow's Lane. We identified a, an area.
Okay. And it was approximately, how many, how large? Eleven by eighteen?
Ten by-
Ten by twenty, I think.
So we have, we've identified two areas.
Let's, let's go back to, let's go back to this slide for a second. This one here.
Well, this is the, don't look at the red dots here because-
No, that's okay.
One of the red dots.
All, all four of the red dots could be a place where we could put a shed.
But this is for our bathrooms.
It could also be a shed.
Yeah, it could be. So do we want to do both now? Okay. We've identified, well, how do you want to do this? With the bathrooms first? I mean-
Yeah, we could do that.
We're going to get-
We're going to get to that. We're going to get to that. So go to twenty-four.
So for either the bathroom at Dow's Lane or the storage shed, which are both estimated to be about a nineteen by eleven, or other words, a two-hundred-square-foot building, we identified, yeah, the four areas.
I think we're, I think we're confusing everybody. Why don't we go backward? Go back to the way we put, put this together? So these are the places that we considered for the bathroom. They're also viable areas for a shed. So we kind of did this interchangeably, so we-
But there was one more for the, for the shed.
Right. Well, yeah, so basically, these reds, these red squares are places we identified. That could be for the bathroom and protect the shed. So we looked at that.
But also one more potential area in here for the shed as well.
We could have, yeah.
Right. Take down this one.
Right. So we, we went to, looking at the, we first, first started looking at the bathroom because we wanted, that was part of the, the original proposal. We wanted to make sure we, we got that. So we're looking at where we would put that. And right now, we're thinking that it would be best in the area, if I go back to the bigger picture, the, the area at the bottom where, where the drop off is. It's close to the K-one playground. Access to both upper Dow's and lower Dow's. So from a recent, from a athletic point of view, that would be very good. It would be good from the little kids' perspective, the K-one students. And it would probably, we could probably do some really good landscaping to keep it very nice and incorporating it with the existing area. So that's-
Again, have not totally figured this out.
So that's what our current thinking is. So then that leaves the other spots that potentially could put a shed.
So we're going to, we're going to, just to keep the order, I understand. We're going to turn to questions in, in a little bit. Thank you.
So then, so this, then we have to figure out where we would want, this is also what a bathroom would look like. Just give you some stock photos because some people wanted to have an idea of what it might look like. These are not other buildings. They're, they're very good-looking buildings. We can make them as good-looking as we want to make them. We could put landscaping around them. We've talked about putting a water bottle filling station with it. So that would be great for supporting our recycling program and also for the students that bring water bottles for their sports and things like that. So right now, we cart out a lot of water for students. So this, this would be something what it would look like. The one on the far right is actually at Hastings right now, in their, their field. And the other two, I just took, we just took some stock photos to show you what it, what it could look like. The, the one disadvantage of that particular location is that it is pretty close to the beginning. When you first come into Dow's, it would be on that left there. If, you know, if you're looking at the building, you're not going to see it right away, but it could, it would be right on the left. That's right now where we're thinking we might recommend this. So then that left where we could put the shed. And so I think we were, oh, I think we were thinking, sorry, to put the shed. I don't know, I guess I didn't put that slide in. I guess I never put that slide in. I'm sorry. I did this a little bit quickly today. But the upper circle, right, right over here. Either over here or even a little bit further back. I don't, we haven't put a slide together for this. So is where we would think about putting, think about the shed for the, the maintenance. We really haven't decided that is really what's going on yet. We're still trying to figure that one out. That's what I think we were discussing. So it's maybe further back.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
So right now, these locations are up. B and G is not making a recommendation yet as to the location. We're just sharing with you our thought process and where we are to date. We had a meeting right before break. We had multiple conversations and emails over break and then we met again yesterday for over two hours. So we are trying to, you know, we have a deadline and we want to give everyone an opportunity to hear our thought process and how we've gotten to this point. So again, to make it clear, this is possible locations. We want to get some feedback from the board and from the community and we still have more work to do. So, questions?
I certainly have questions, but I defer to-
You might as well just finish really quickly.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. We haven't finished, sorry.
So the other, the other thing that was asked was if they could see a rendering of the high school entrance. So we're just kind of doing like, this is a follow-up presentation, so we're just trying to pick up all the loose ends from questions that we've had. This is still being worked on by the architects, so I know they didn't really want us to put this in yet because it's not the final rendering. But this is an idea of what it could look like. Again, we will have a much bigger design process after the vote because you can't go into too much detail. I know I've been a broker record saying that, but I have to keep saying that. But this is an idea of what it could look like. It would, it would change the grade so that you would not be walking up a hill. You'd be, the, the whole grade would be changed.
And conceptually, just showing you, the building is exactly the way it is. This is what would be built on the outside.
Right, the vestibule would be on the outside.
Visual because a lot of people couldn't visualize this.
Like up in front.
Right, so it's just literally in front of the building. The rest is existing and then the regrading of the area.
And so to really, to really understand this is to, to go back to the presentation in which you did the, it was the comprehensive presentation. We talked about security. We talked about some major improvements. And so this is within the context of that presentation with the vestibule that provides better security for entering. It's also more accessible and it takes our entrance from being where everyone came in to get to the library today to the, the original true entrance of the high school. And the purpose is for both the middle school and the high school to have a single point of entry for students and staff and visitors to arrive at.
Right, and it would be a double system.
A double vestibule system.
Vestibule system and also now visitors aren't walking blindly through classrooms, the hallway of classrooms to find their way into the main street, to the main office.
But anyways, if, if, for anyone who's watching on video or if you haven't seen it, I would go back to that presentation where we spent a lot of time.
The other, the other thing I will just mention is that these images are hard to see on the screen with the light in this room. If you look at it on your computer, when we post it on our website tomorrow, it'll be a much easier visual to see on a computer screen, as is all those other images because they're much clearer when you look at them on a computer than they are with this lighting here. It's terrible. So I apologize for that, but, and when I print it, it's, you know, not very good either, so. But we wanted you to be able to follow along, so that's why we print them.
And the numbers.
So then, just to review where we are with the numbers, this is still what I'm recommending in terms of the range. I haven't changed that aspect of the, of the project right now. So we, anybody could borrow anywhere in this range and still be somewhat comfortable. And then I just updated this a little bit because we were originally pushing that the board would make a, more of a finalize the scope by next Tuesday. Given these concerns, we're taking a little bit more time. We do have some time to do it. I have to be really cognizant of the fact that we have to publish a notice in the paper by April sixth. That's the same date we do the budget notice. So I, I have to, that is our, you know, drop dead date for me getting that out. So we do have to do it by pretty much the end of March because if we don't, I won't have time to get the resolutions done and the, and the legal notice done. So I'm, I really would be recommending to the board at this point to hopefully, you know, come up with a scope by maybe the nineteenth at our board meeting then or a special meeting sometime in between. So we have, I put a TBD there for now, but I do say we have a little bit more time than next Tuesday. So we're not looking to pressure you into, especially since we have still some more work to do and we've had a week break and we couldn't get everything done. So that's, I just wanted to give everybody a sense of the update of the timeline as well.
And then for, for you and the, and the board, we're also doing the annual budget process.
Also doing the budget, so there's a lot going on right now, so it's a little tricky. But we can, we can get it all done. I mean, it's, it's not undoable. I'm, I, I don't want anyone to lose faith that we can't get it done. We can get it done. We just still want to be thoughtful about what we're doing. So, so now we're up to discussion.
Okay. Thank you for keeping us on track. So trustees, if you have some questions, Mr. Graber.
Mr. Graber, I see his face.
Yeah, well, at first I, I wanted to say thank you to the Buildings and Grounds Committee. That was a really good presentation. I appreciate it. Especially after being involved in that Q and A a couple of weeks ago and, you know, having my own questions too. That really addressed my questions. So I wanted to thank you guys. I wondered, I don't have too many questions. I just, the slide, what I see is a sort of compromise there, which is really nice. You know, sort of needing to attend to something that I know as long as I've lived here that's sort of been on the ask and on the need, which is some space for Gary and his crew to do their work while also really heavily considering all the fine folks and plus, plus extras in the, in the place. And I wondered, like, so I, I, and also the, the, someone had mentioned something at a turn, but the idea that there's a bathroom and a water piece, thank you for reminding me, Carol, that it's good for recycling so that, you know, kids won't leave water bottles out there after soccer on Saturdays and whatnot. And also, you know, the little ones who go sprinkle in the, in the woods along somebody's house over there. Not your house, but somebody else's house in the back of Dow's Lane.
We also talked, I just interrupt, just add one more piece to that. We've talked at length in our security meetings about the aspect of having an outdoor bathroom because, you know, right now, we're having to leave the doors open at the school after school when there's, games are going on at upper Dow's and at lower Dow's, which is constantly the fall and the spring, not so much in the winter, but so much in, and those, the schools open. And we're, you know, we locked the school and now we, someone's buzzing at the door trying to get in because a, a child has to go to the bathroom and they can't, you know, do it. So we've talked about the security concern at both campuses of having that outdoor bathroom. We're solving the one at the campus with that athletic storage building by adding it to it. And here, we have to do something a little bit different by adding a separate building. But it really is not just a convenience. It's also a security concern for us.
Right, but it, and it was also an ask of students.
Yeah.
And it was also, it was also identified with the committee as well.
Yeah, it was great. And so I guess my one, my one question on this very thorough response to all of our questions, again, thank you, is the shed behind Dow's. Why is it that we can't just replace the shed that's currently there with a new structure?
It's got to be away from the building.
So the shed that we have there right now is not appropriate?
Well, it was back in the day when it was put there.
Correct. So anytime you, so once it's gone, you cannot-
Right, we have to adhere to current-
Okay, so you can't, so that space is out of, is off limits because of the, the SED rule?
No, it's, no, no, no.
Carol, Veronica's here.
So my understanding is that that shed is in very poor condition. So I think no matter what, the shed needs to be replaced and whether it's replaced in that location or relocated is, you know, two different items. What the State Education Department requires is that any, any structure be thirty feet away from an existing building or the part of the building that has classrooms in it. So we would need to pull that existing shed location further away from the existing building.
So remember, originally it had a class, it was used for a classroom, which is why it was a different location. It would be allowed as a classroom closer, but it's no longer used as a classroom. So there's a difference in use, the purpose of use.
And there, and for those, I'm sure everyone here is familiar with that, with, with the land there, but it's also a pretty, I mean, if you pull it away from the building, you're dealing with the hillside again too. So it's not, it's not an ideal location, is it?
No, there's, there's, there's areas back there that are, that could-
It's probably flat enough, but again, you're either having to drive from the dumpster side, you know, closer to Mr. Shep's house or you'd have to drive around the other side. And either way, well, I guess the dumpster side would be the easier side to drive because you're not impacting students. But it's still not an ideal way of driving in that far. So, I mean, we're, we're doing it now with a small vehicle, but we're not doing it with any large vehicles.
Either way, thank you very much for presenting a really, really strong, in my opinion, alternative and response to everybody's concerns.
I just want to understand, so the new shed, which would replace the shed that currently blocks the windows for many of the classrooms on the, bit of an eyesore for many of the students who are in those classrooms, that's going to be used to store- No, no, I mean, the replacement shed is smaller than that shed and it's going to be used to store what types of items?
We were looking to store like the- We were looking to store like the lawn mowers, the snow blowers, whatever the seasonal items that we need for the Dow's, I mean, it was...
And those are currently stored in the old shed?
Some of them are stored in the old shed, some of them are stored up outside.
Along with the existing elements as well. Okay. Thank you.
So, again, the idea that the community did talk about was decentralizing so that you'd have equipment at each location, which does have a good point about not having to bring it from each school to each school, which we currently do right now. We try to keep stuff at Main Street School, at the campus at Dow's because it does make it for a much easier snow removal and lawn mowing. Gary talks about when you time to mow the lawn, you're trying to get that in before students are in class or after. There's a short window for us to do some of this. Having the equipment at the ready is also useful to us to do that.
Thank you.
And I'm not sure if everyone realizes, there's, currently, there is a shed at Main Street School off the side of the playground. A lot of people don't realize it's there, but it's there. And so, a lot of the stuff is kept there for Main Street School.
Near the back entrance where the steps go down to where the elevator is?
Tucked by the playground.
Ah.
Between the old and new playground.
Right. Okay.
So, in regards to that 30-foot dimension, I'm not sure what the requirements would have been when those original trailers were placed at the Dow's Lane campus, but what SED actually states is that it's 30 feet away from the building for any type of structure. So, it could be, it could be, you know, if it's built now, it could be classrooms, it could be a shed, so I just want to clarify that point.
What if it's an addition?
Same thing. Even if it was an addition, you'd have to build the addition 30 feet away from, from that existing space.
Connecting it to a building.
Yeah. So, then you lose where that connection is. You lose that space as potentially classroom space if that's the way it's designed.
These structures 30 feet and you would just have to, you were adding addition to the school, it would be 30 feet away with a connection to the structure.
So, that, so our other previous trailer was, it was an old grandfather's...
Yeah, it may have been, you know, a different code at that point.
Should I ask you, is it a waste of energy? I just want to know why it's called an addition then. Not really an addition.
I know.
Right.
It's like, in addition to...
The wisdom of Albany.
No, but let's, do you have a clarification? Could you use the microphone, please?
If you tack it on to the end of, sorry, if you tack it on to the end of a building, as long as you're not blocking the windows to the classroom, it doesn't need to be 30 feet away. But if it's facing towards the classrooms and the windows of the classrooms, that's when it needs to be 30 feet away because you need enough room for light and air to get into the classrooms. So, it wouldn't be like a long connecting piece if...
Okay. Well, that's, that does make sense and that also answers...
Very clear.
Yeah, well, that answers your question too in terms of taking down the dilapidated storage shed. I mean, we're giving light, we're giving view to those students in those classrooms who are there throughout the school day and right now are looking at a rusty shed. So, that's certainly an improvement for those students. Well, given that explanation, I mean, one of, I'll start later. Did you have any questions, Maura or Beth? Did you have any additional ones?
No, thank you. I'm happy to...
All right. So, I want to echo what you said, Deb, and what you said, Dave, is that, you know, week after week, we're seeing weather events here in which I think our staff deserves to be able to work in a safe environment in terms of preparing equipment, connecting equipment to the trucks, et cetera. So, you know, yesterday, we had heavy winds, we've had heavy snow, we've had heavy rain. It's week by week. The, at Dow's Lane, if we do this smaller, this is an approach I think I'm favorable to, I appreciate hearing it, a smaller decentralized approach, that seems to me logistically better for your staff, Gary, in terms of having something at each, we've just identified there's something at Main Street School, we have something now at each campus. What we're losing is the idea of the outdoor storage space in terms of the vehicles themselves.
Indoor storage.
Indoor storage. Indoor storage, sorry.
Can't park.
A building that's away from, yeah.
So, we could potentially only park one vehicle, which is better than nothing.
But, but, so at the high school, you're talking about still being able to pull a vehicle into a safe environment for our staff to work in. The shed at Main Street School in Dow's Lane doesn't allow for that?
No.
Not for trucks.
Okay, I'm sorry, just for the microphone.
Not for the trucks, but for the mowers with the plows on them and the blades on them, we could work in those, in that shed.
And how often are you having to attach or detach equipment from the trucks or need a space like that?
Trucks, it depends on the weather, you know, because you don't want to drive around with a plow off for two weeks if you're not going to get any snow. And in the summer, we sharpen our blades on our mowers. That's, that work is all being done outdoors. If a blade is bent, we have to actually get under the mower.
But you could do, with the mowers, you could do that in the shed?
We can do that in the shed, yes.
Right. So, really, the only time that you need a vehicle is essentially for snow or what other kind of weather events are you...
Snow, rain, yesterday, the wind, you know, you don't want to be...
In terms of using, attaching something to your truck?
In terms of fixing anything on our truck.
Fixing anything, right. Thank you for that reminder.
We had, like Maria said, we, the last storm we had, we had to replace the pistons and the, the, I can't pull the plugs, well, parts on our plow. You know, we were leaking hydraulic fluid and as you drive the truck, the plow was dropping and you can't really drive a vehicle like that. And I had to work on it outside, outdoors.
Yeah. I mean, for one, I'm sorry that this hasn't been identified and addressed long ago for your staff. So, I guess I'm, so we're talking smaller, we're talking decentralized, but it seems like, from what I'm hearing, that we should still be looking at an opportunity for the ability to bring a vehicle in at Dow's Lane, which would be smaller, much smaller than what we were talking about previously, but larger than what we're talking about now. I mean, the other thought I have is that this bond is well timed to be debt neutral, interest rates are low, et cetera, et cetera. So, it's, but, but there's not likely an opportunity like that for a long time again. And I also think of these projects as long-term projects, so it's not something for four years or 10 years. I mean, I would hate to spend that money for something so temporary. So, when we do this work, I like to think that it's something that will be around long after we've been involved in the schools. And I'm not sure if the shed really meets that criteria, if anyone else thinks along those lines. So, I guess what I would ask is, in your considerations, and I appreciate the work you're doing, is there still that opportunity at Dow's Lane to also have a place where a vehicle can be brought in and not simply only storage in a shed that may be here for 10 or 15 years before it needs to be replaced again? So, I think that's, that's something I'd like to suggest that be considered.
I, maybe Veronica wants to comment on that. I will say in response that if we are looking for a location at Dow's Lane where we can store a vehicle, we are looking at the Dow's Lane basketball court, not the other locations.
So, that space that's down below where the trash dumpsters are kept, there's no classroom there, that's a, or does the cafeteria count as that?
Can you put the, can you put the area of Dow's Lane?
Cafeteria counts. And if it is moved slightly further back, there, it's, could you meet that, have you checked to see if that could fit that 30-foot space? Because that's where vehicles, you know, we pick up our trash and deliver food to the cafeteria anyhow. So, for me, that seems like we're having a similar use...
An extension.
If there's any way to put it in that area.
Like right over, you're going to talk to them? So, it would be... I mean, we could look at it and see what the, we can walk it again.
Yeah, I would just say, if there's any way to really make that work, again, it's right where vehicles are coming anyways to pick up trash and deliver food for the cafeteria. It's not particularly exposed to, and so I'd suggest if you could, to take a look at that area.
Can I ask, also, just speaking of which, just looking at this visual now, so this is the old shed, right?
Correct.
And we can't put a shed there because of the 30-foot.
Correct.
Right. This is your house, right?
And then it starts sloping there.
Right, right. Goes here, I see, to the slope. So, you, so in other words, you can't build in this area because of that sloping. Is that right?
You probably could. It's probably flat enough.
Not a great spot.
It's not a great spot, but you could.
Michael's talking about somewhere in here.
Right. I'm just trying to think of...
But that's a...
Is that the path?
Yeah, that's a hill and it's a hill. It's a slope.
And there's a decent amount of drainage there too, I think.
And it's the sledding hill if anybody goes sledding.
Yes, correct. I get it. Good point. Scratch that.
He's in between the sledding hills.
You got the long, slow one or the fast, sharp one?
Well, this is good feedback and we can look into it.
No, I think, I think, again, regarding the bathrooms, anytime we've spoken to parents with young children, they seem to get it very quickly how it will improve their lives. And the, both when we've been talking about the new basketball court, I guess that's the other question too, is to go back to the idea of resurfacing the basketball court. Did you list a...
We really didn't talk about it because we kind of jumped over that slide, but if we did these small buildings, we would have, in a sense, money from what we didn't spend on the larger facilities building, which we could then use to potentially resurface the existing Dow's Basketball Court, do some other few things that we couldn't include, like I put, we've had requests to paint the Main Street School tower. So, I added that in that slide, but we, you know, potentially could entertain that and we could maybe use some of the other money, just intend some of the beautification that was raised during these community feedback meetings. So, that's something you could consider because the cost is different. And again, as far as parking at Dow's, you know, for the most part, I think, Gary, if he has one spot where he can pull a building in, we can get the truck there, we can fix it. If we have it at every school, I mean, that would be ideal, but we may not be able to get there because it would be probably too large unless we put it at the basketball court, which tab, you know, I mentioned, it's really probably the only spot that would fit in a building that, you know, would not be a problematic spot.
We could look at it behind Dow's Lane one more time.
We'll look at it one more time for sure, though. So, the only other place we could put a little bit bigger spot would be, but it's close to the existing 2-3 playground and it's kind of close to Dow's, the upper Dow's, upper field, putting it somewhere in there. But again, because that's, you know, kind of another little spot there, but again, it's just maybe not ideal.
But there's a way that you can access those fields without having to go in front of the vehicles there?
Well, it would be right against where the road curves there, so it would be close to where the road is because the idea is not to try to build a lot more roads, right? We don't want to build a lot more roads. We want to use existing roads and existing utilities.
But it would be very small, the area identified, right? And it would be very small. You wouldn't be able to put something big enough to drive a vehicle into it. You know, there are trees there, you know, trying to keep what's there, it would have to be on the smaller side. This is basically what we're thinking at the moment.
Right.
If, with the, with the old basketball court, if you were to resurface it, do you have to, what do you have to do? Do you have to remove the existing concrete, the pavement or...
No.
Without removing the existing asphalt, it could be resurfaced.
And I just want to add, I know that...
Yeah, so it would not damage the, any root structure, yeah.
Yeah, and I know Superintendent Harrison's not here, but he did talk to the gentleman who I think was representing the tree commission concerning the repairs to the basketball court and in conjunction with their sharing information, they felt very confident that repairs could be made to the old basketball court without adversely affecting root systems.
For the occasional use that gets, for the potential daily use in the new stadium.
One thing, Michael, may I add one thing? I feel compelled to just talk to the community for a second about this process because I've been so super wowed by the response and the interaction and from the interaction, potential action. And I just urge folks repeatedly and over and over again, this is the best way to engage in a community discussion, not other ways. Social media is a great way, petitions online are great ways to talk to one another and so on, but when you really want to deal with trying to fix an issue or resolve an issue or come to some kind of compromise on an issue, I've just now watched over six some odd weeks specifically in this process that not only work, but work really well and forge really nice relationships amongst people communicating positively. So, I just continue to urge you to do that because it's super important for us to help the process. Thank you.
And would much rather have you here, speaking with us directly than maybe sort of the environment that can happen in an online, exclusively online forum. I think you have to kind of, speaking for all of us personally, it's great to see you.
Yeah. And while, and while we're, it's still the planning stages, you know, it's one of the things I say about our annual budget is that if you're concerned about budgets, be involved now, not after we've signed off on a proposed budget because like you're seeing here, there's still the opportunity to make adjustments and that's what we're looking at. So, if the note...
And yeah, and add that, you know, sometimes I know people's schedules, you can't come to meetings. Emails are also great. We've been flooded with a lot of emails and maybe you might not have received a very timely response, but we've been pretty good about responding to all the emails. So, we do read them, we do listen, so email is also great. But I just want to make one final comment. I hope you realize, I mean, yes, a lot of work has gone into this, but there is no one magic answer to this. There's pros and cons to every location that we've considered. We feel very strongly that the need is there. It's been highlighted through a variety of ways. So, I just, just really wanted to point that out. We are trying, we are listening, but there's no easy answer here, so...
And somebody in our community will see the structure if it goes up. Clearly, that was, that was on every list of cons, so I guess some are more easily masked than others.
Right. And the other thing I, that kind of just, that I just thought of, when we were talking about the high school campus, there is already a structure being proposed there. So, that's why we weren't adding on because it would take up the entire hill there and that was one of the things that a lot of people also spoke about was maintaining a lot of the grassy open area for the home games, whether it's football, lacrosse, soccer, any of the home games, because that is something that many do cherish in this community. And I think there's also some aesthetically, I think it's a beautiful thing to see families coming to watch the games, sitting on chairs and blankets and everything else. So, we also were cognizant of that and did not want to take up more space there.
I think if you look at a lot of the proposed items, it's shifting, they shift the location so that areas where we have vistas or views are opened up and we try and move things to places where they hopefully don't block quite as much.
Right.
So, certainly that's a part of it. We could go on, obviously, but we want to give an opportunity for all of you who've come and listened patiently, we appreciate that, to ask any questions or share any suggestions. We have read your letters, if you've shared. So, anyone who'd like to speak, we have a microphone in the back and we'd ask that you go to the microphone. We do video record these events and if some of you have been watching the video, I should do the same and speak into the mic so that people can hear what's being said. If you could share your name and keep your comments or questions to under three minutes. Thank you.
My name is Trish Waters and thank you so much for your presentation. I was out of the country for a while when this was going on, so I've caught up. And so, I, from what I have read and seen before, this, what Ms. Kashkin and Ms. Hargraves proposed is a huge improvement for, for the Dow's Lane area, which is where I live, the Spiral Park. So, that, that's, that's great. However, I, I would like Mr. Hannah to please clarify what you said about building a place to have a truck in there when it seems like your coworkers or co-board members heard the, heard the comments from the people that live in the area and they took that in mind when they came up with a different solution or proposal. I don't understand what you're, you seem to be flying in the face of that and just saying, yeah, we've got to still have a garage there with the truck so we can have a truck. And it seems like the pro, the cons that you had before about that are still, would still be there for having a garage on Dow's Lane. Can you clarify that?
So, hold on one second. So to be clear, originally the proposal was a thirty-five hundred square foot facility that would be able to house everything. We're looking at other locations and we would not be able to house anywhere near what originally we were proposing.
So you're decentralizing.
Right, so what, and the purpose of tonight was to share some of our thought process from the past and current and solicit feedback from the board and from the community. So I think Michael's question was, because we were highlighting, it was a four bay garage with also storing other things, Michael is thinking more forward, not now, not current needs, but if we're going to be spending this money, think a little bit more into the future. And ideally, yes, it would be ideal to have a location at Dow's Lane that you could store and work on one vehicle and house the equipment. Ideally, that would be the best case scenario. And I think Michael's comment was really just reminding of, of that, so.
Oh, I understand that, but, but Mr. Hanna said, can you please go back and look into including that?
Well, but that was, and that is the purpose of today's meeting. We're not making a recommendation, the, we're sharing with you our thoughts, where we're leaning. But we came tonight to listen, to listen to the board and to listen to the community. And he was just sharing his comments and I think it shouldn't be taken any more than that.
Really, you know me so well. And I, I guess I would say, I hope it didn't come across as cavalier. I, I, it's coming from a place in which I, every time that we have heavy rain, every time that we have snow, every time that we have high winds like we did yesterday, we're asking our staff to go out and work in that environment. And I'm asking for us to create at Dow's Lane and at the high school campus, an environment in which our staff can work safely and appropriately with their equipment in ways that was described by our director of facilities. So it's certainly, I believe in a decentralized approach with much smaller buildings along what is being described now. And so what I'm asking for, what I believe that we deserve to do on behalf of our staff now and in, long into the future, thank you, is to, to create an environment which is, which is safe for them to work in and also a place where we can protect our equipment so it also has a longer life. So I'm sorry if it comes across as cavalier. For me, it's a, it's a place in which I care about not only our students, we all have students, our community, but also for the people who work for the district.
Thank you.
Douglas McClure. I just want to clarify, when you're talking about redoing the basketball court, during the earlier discussions, there was discussion that that location is actually not the best location for watching the kids, et cetera. It's off from the rest of the play area. So I'm wondering if it makes sense to maybe take up that basketball court anyway, if you go with some of these decentralized approaches, and still keep with the new basketball court in the new location. Because it's more visibly accessible to the, you know, to teachers, et cetera, during research, during recess. And then it would actually give that lower area the green space that everyone seems to really imagine it is. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Ms. McClure.
Hi, Paula Harrington. I just wanted to add to what you were saying to the basketball court. And this is just from an observation, because I live right next to the basketball court. I've seen it time and time again coming in at lunchtime and noticing that, actually, it's a great place for the kids to play. Because the aids are more, I don't know, it just seems like it's safer. I've seen other times when they're playing on the playground and then I've actually seen kids hanging with the trees because they don't have eyes behind their heads. But when they're in that, on that location, it's going to get really closed. They're all running around in one big square and it's almost like they can stand upon a little hill going up to the school. I just have, I don't know, I think it's actually better to have it there. I just wanted to say that, just kind of observing personally.
Thank you.
I will comment, if it's okay, in regards to that, that some of the comments we heard about relocating the basketball court is if we do move it, it goes from a very shady spot to a very sunny spot. We take it from a very safe location where there's no road and no cars. And if we possibly move it to where the old trailers were, there's a possibility that the ball and the children would be in the way of a car that could potentially be going down that driveway. There's also the third reason, if we build a new basketball court, it's going to cost a lot more money. I mean, that, that's the other factor that then gets added into the bond. But I do agree, we, the board should be considering whether you think that's something that the community wants and that we should be including, because as you said, Michael, it's now or never. I mean, this is the time to improve our facilities. Even if we, when we get voter approval, it still takes a year in order for us even to begin construction. So we're talking about projects, minimal. We're talking about projects that won't even begin to be constructed for a year or two down the road. So if this is something the community wants, the ba, a new basketball court in a new location, this is the time.
All right, but I just want to clarify again, I believe that when Superintendent Harrison spoke to the person who's representing the tree commission, that picking up the old basketball court, sorry for that really loud P, would be problematic compared to repairing it. And moreover, I'm not entirely sure that that placement of a new basketball court is safe for the Quans or Cherries. I mean, this is something I've mentioned before. So I would like to hear more about that and have that looked at on another walk around about that specific LA of trees. Because in keeping with what Ms. Harrington said, you know, that shady area with that trees becomes a place for free play. Children climb, the beautiful, there's, actually, there are these amazing caterpillars that come in every spring. I'm waxing all nostalgic for when my children were there.
I guess the, the, that area could be, continue to be paved or, or asphalt, rather, or it could be a green space. It is one consideration as well.
You mean the older basketball court?
The older basketball court.
But, right, but I would just ask that you check again, because my understanding was picking up that area actually is more dangerous for the root systems. That's my recollection, I do think we need to clarify.
May I, may I add, ask as well, if, has Dow's Lane administration or the folks who actually administer the recess been, has their input been sought at, at any point? And where, where did they weigh in on this?
Without Chris being here, I know that they were interested in more visibility for the basketball court. They didn't want to lose a hard surface because they do use it for other activities such as Halloween carnival. So they didn't want to have the basketball court go away in its entirety because they do use it also for wet play at recess. But in terms of whether they, they wanted the court in one location versus the other, I don't, I don't know how far along that conversation got.
By Brian or his presentation is that it's, you can monitor both spaces when it's, when it's at the new location. Versus it's a choice between being up or down otherwise.
So they favored.
They favored.
Easier monitoring.
Right. They favored the, the new location.
And I will say for every aspect of the bond, the administration was consulted, every principle for anything that was built at their building as well as what we're proposing.
Hi, thanks. I do want to thank everyone for the work you've done.
Can you state your name, please?
Rebecca Pelletier.
Thank you.
And I do feel like a lot of the points have been heard and addressed and I appreciate that. So I wanted to start off saying that. Couple of things, I, I second what the other two people said. The basketball court, if you ask the kids, if you pull the kids, they love it. Resurfacing it in a safe way would be probably safer because I do know that there's been incidences at the school on the hard surfaces where there's big cracks. So, you know, having a smoother surface for outdoor recess. And those spaces are used for outdoor recess quite a bit whenever the ground is muddy or wet. So just make it something a little bit safer. If it can be done in a safe way with the trees, to have a smoother surface would probably make sense there. But I think if you pull the kids, I think most kids would like that space to stay what it is, a basketball court and a paved surface. And the other location really wasn't ideal, I think, because of the heat and, like you mentioned, the trees there. One other thing I wanted to say is that, you know, I appreciate that you thought of decentralizing it. I do agree with the gentleman that, you know, a garage in that space shouldn't be revisited at this point. I think that the community has spoken about that. And also, Mr. Hanna mentioned forward thinking. And I think as we think forward, we should remember that we might not need as much equipment ten, twenty years from now. I would love to see less blowing, for instance, just one thing. And, you know, equipment does change. And I also think that, you know, one other thing that we mentioned at that Saturday meeting was outsourcing some of the repairs. And also, there may be conditions that we shouldn't have our staff working in. If it is too windy or too rainy or too snowy, perhaps that's not a good day for them to be working outside. So those are just a few things I overheard and I wanted to comment on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Erin Bernstein, the parent of a third grader. I just have one question, because it's always about finances. How much is the decentralized, are the decentralized structures going to cost relative to the large structures? Because I know from past experience, digging into rock increases your costs exponentially. And I'm concerned that we're going to spend twice as much money on two structures that are a third of the size. And I totally agree, Gary and his team deserve to have an area where they can do work inside. I wholly support that all of our staff should be treated fairly and have proper working conditions. But I'm just concerned that now we've maybe doubled the cost on something that's a third of the size. But that's just my own.
We're not there yet with, with, with the pricing that, we're still working on all of this, so. As soon as we have the numbers, we will be reporting.
But I will, I will.
Your concern is valid. We have preliminary numbers and we are, we had concerns all along from the beginning of this process about the cost of removing the bedrock and dealing with the, the elevations, the change in elevations behind the building. So we.
On a square footage basis, it's always cheaper to build a larger building than it is a smaller building on a, on a per cost, per square foot basis. That being said, our goal would probably be to be lower than the original estimated amount, so we wouldn't look to go over that, certainly.
Right, but you're going to, it was a million dollars originally.
Right, more than that, so we'll.
For a thirty-five hundred square foot building. I hope it's not a million dollars for, it sounds like thirteen hundred square feet.
And we wouldn't, probably likely wouldn't recommend it.
Okay, if there were also, can I just add one other thing? Maybe this didn't rank so high on the survey. Oh, and thank you, I didn't say thank you, so sorry, I'm too under the weather. Is there any chance to look at, if there is any savings on this, to look at some other, what's the word, energy efficient projects that might be able to get built into the bond? Because to Michael's point, sort of like this is our time to do this, so maybe if there is some money that's being saved. I know, I think I just saw wind towers at Dobbs Ferry and I think they have them in Tarrytown now, Sleepy Hollow. Just something to consider, maybe then there might be some long-term savings to gain from that, too. So, thanks. And the presentation was awesome, so. Carol, God bless you, because I don't know how you do all this, you have the bomb, the bomb, the budget going on. Oh, I'll just give a shout out. Next weekend is the, we're going to talk about curriculum in the budget. So if anyone has anything that they're concerned about or want to hear about, coming to next week's board meeting would be great. And I'll just echo, I usually sit in this room alone as a guest. And when they go, is there any public comment, I stare at empty chairs and I go, oh, that's me. So it was nice to see so many people here and this really is the place to get it done and for everyone to hear what you have to say. So I can speak to that firsthand and I think this was great, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bernstein.
She has your voice, Carol.
I, I think also I just want to share one idea that has come out of this and I'll say it while you're here because this is the opportunity, is that, you know, last year, our district newsletter listed dozens of ways in which community members can become involved. And we are regularly asking for, for people to volunteer in various committees and projects and initiatives. So, you know, some of us have, have, as trustees and administrators have reached out to entities and to the village and to others about shared services. So we're always looking to, to find those opportunities. And certainly that's an opportunity that we've been discussing in terms of creating a committee to, to sustain that work over time. Similarly, you know, Irvington can certainly be looking at its own Green New Deal. And, and we have many, many initiatives in which we're trying to improve with the water filling stations, with LED lights in this project, with food recycling at Dow's Lane, trips to, to all sorts of places where students can learn about the environment and being responsible towards. So that's another opportunity in terms of something we're looking at that could be an ongoing effort to support those kinds of measures, so.
And I would like to add, we have been looking at that as a committee and it's been part of this process. The amount of hours and meetings that we have had since last June till now, there is no way we could properly, we would have to have a meeting every day to really, truly keep everyone apprised of everything. So please know that we have been looking at things. And there are things that also could be done that has nothing to do with this project, that is not, we're still investigating some other things. It's just not part of this. And we've also ruled out other things, but we just don't have enough time to report on every single thing.
Right, and to clarify, on the regular full capital plan presentation, there are many projects that take into account efficiencies for energy. And in addition, during our operating budget presentation, which was our previous work session, we'd say the work session, we talked about how many of the issues that were raised by the people who have come to talk to us about the Dow's Lane issue have raised things that can be taken care of and some changes that we might have in our operations budget concerning greener opportunities.
Right, I mean, the suggestion of our equipment will be changing, absolutely. As it becomes more effective in a commercial level for our campuses, we will be looking to implement them.
Hey, my name's Dave Soller and I just, first of all, I think everyone is, you know, you have probably a lot less comments today because I think you really did address a lot of the concerns from the community, which is greatly appreciated. So thank you very much for, for really tackling a very difficult subject. But there was, I'd sort of have two questions. One, you mentioned there's like a hard stop date to this, which I believe is the end of March. Because you want to, you know, get this, get this sort of squared away. But two, two questions. One, let's say, like, what happens if it can't, you, you can't iron it out? What do we do? Can this part, can you table this part of the proposal? If you, why are we letting the March hard date dictate such a delicate and significant part of the community's needs and, and, and scheduling? You know, that in, just for the sake of trying to fit this into this, this part of the proposal? So I, I ask that, A. And B, is there, if this does sort of get tied up in a bow and it is included in the capital bond to be voted on? I know this was addressed at the first meeting, but let's say you run into some difficulties and then all of a sudden they say, oh, we can't put it there, but we've got the approval, but we can't put it there. We're going to go back to Dow's. Like, how much of the grace, how, is there a grace or, or period where you can actually adjust it after the community's voted on it and you change the plan once it's been voted on?
I'll comment on this if you don't mind.
And Veronica.
Yeah, and Veronica needs to address the secret part of it. But the, certainly you do not have to put this up for vote in May. I mean, we've done a lot of work, we really want to get there because there are so many security, especially the security aspects of this bond that we want to get done and the community has told us they, they want that done. And the longer you wait, the longer you don't get that done, the longer you're going to be waiting for SED to, to their forty weeks. There's just a timeline that we've put up in our presentations that just is endless. So certainly the board can make that decision, that they don't want to put it up for vote in May. As far, something I wanted to bring up to the board also, is that if we are not certain on an exact location, we can, we can put an allowance in for dollars to, to then, and then further review it after the vote. It depends on whether or not that the location would be affected by SECRE, and I want Veronica to talk about that in terms of what that would mean. So that we, if we're not sure exactly, we still want to have more community input on whether this spot is better than this spot. We could do that with, using the words, you know, putting in allowances for dollars for, for a shed, for a building, for whatever. But I do want Veronica to speak to the SECRE implications to that.
Yeah, so just, just to clarify, so the, 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 that drop dead date of, of April first or March, March thirty first is really about the public bid law and it's forty five, that you need to have the board adopt a resolution for SECRE as well as voting forty-five days before the actual bond voter or budget vote. And so that's why if we're target, you know, we typically bless you, target a specific vote and then work backwards from that, from that date. So that's the reason for that, that April first date or end of, end of March, that's the first part of it. The second part, just in terms of. Um, the second part, just in terms of, the, for SECRE, so SECRE is the State Environmental Quality Review Act, and the requirements for that is that you, um, define the scope of work, and then the board, um, declares themselves the lead agency, once we provide them with all the data for them to review for SECRE. Um, and so as Carol was talking about, uh, there's an opportunity with SECRE to identify, um, multiple locations for a project, or the garage, or whatever it happens to be. Um, and as long as they all fall within the same type of action, whether it's a type one, or a type two, or an unlisted action, then it all, you know, it all can move forward together as a single project. And, and that's all the information that we, all the, the recommendation, that will be included in the recommendations that we provide to the, um, to the school board for SECRE.
Thank you.
Potentially, we could change the location as long as we've identified them in this place, and they're all considered unlisted in the SECRE process, which is being done right now. So as we're doing all of them, if we potentially conclude all of them in our analysis, we could then vote on the location later.
And, and to clarify also, Carol, that, you know, it's, it's not, you can't move it to a location that's not identified in SECRE. It's only within the, uh, locations that are identified and adopted by the board.
So I guess you could come back and tell us these are the locations that we've identified.
So we could say, potentially say all of these that we had identified on the screen, and if the, if the SECRE process says that those are all okay, we still don't have to decide. We took, we would just put the allowance for it and go from there.
And in terms of trust with the community, if we said we're not gonna do it in X spot or Y spot, we could publicly make that commitment.
Right, sure.
And, and, um, and to keep in mind with SECRE, you, um, you could reduce the scope after you adopt SECRE, you can't increase the scope, so you can't add to the scope.
But I think I heard a couple things in your question, I just wanna also clarify. We're not in a position to say that, to put forward on the vote that we're gonna have a garage facility, and we locate the high school, and then come back and say, after the vote, oh no, we moved it to Dow's Lane. That is, that is not what we're doing. We're here today to, to, to clarify that we have different locations where there's a possibility, and this board will vote on where the location is going to be in terms of which campus, whether it's five feet to the right, or twenty feet down that direction. We do have that flexibility, but we're not looking to, you know, bait and switch in any stretch. The other thing I think I heard you say is, why don't we have the numbers today? The simple answer is, uh, for the facility and the new location up at the high school, is we had a one-week holiday, and we have a construction manager who we're waiting on for the numbers. But we will most definitely have that number within short order, just so you know. It's not like, it doesn't take a month to get, it just, we just need a little extra time.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, it was more, uh, why, you know, why do we have to make sure that, and you explained it about the forty-five day period. Gentlemen, I think I, I sort of would like to, uh, give my, the rest of my time to my son and his, his buddy here.
Certainly.
My name is Mia, and my name is John, and we're at Dow's Lane Elementary School. We play on the basketball court all the time. We're in the, we're third graders, and we would like the newcomers to enjoy the same evening. And, and we're all, we'd love to be done. And, boy, yeah, that's all.
Tough act to follow. Uh, my name is Eric Ollie, I wanna thank you guys for so much, for how much work you did, I know how much work it was, and it's really admirable that you did this, and it's really admirable that you listened to the community, you listened to the concerns, and you, uh, went back and you changed. Uh, and just to show that flexibility, I think is, is a wonderful thing. Um, I have a specific question regarding the location on the high school campus at the southwestern corner, um, the garage. It seems to me, uh, it's pretty far away from the western border property line, as it's cited, the one that you recommended there in the lower left-hand corner. Does, is there, if you don't have to follow the village building code, can't you build a little bit closer to the property line? Cause that western property line does not have, it's not a structure there, there's no...
Right, it's really just...
It's more the rock.
The rock and the hill?
On the west?
Veronica talking about...
I don't mean to the south. I mean...
Yes, so it's our, I mean, we haven't done soil borings yet, but it appears that there's rock outcroppings there, so we're gonna budget for the fact that there's rock removal. Um, to clarify, we don't have to, the board does not have to follow the zoning requirements, but we still have to follow the building department requirements and the building, or, or, I'm sorry, let me clarify.
SEDs.
The New York State Building Code, as well as the State Education Department requirements. And there are restrictions in building adjacent to a property line, or within a certain distance away from a property line, in terms of fire ratings. So for argument's sake, if you're building right on a property line, you have to have a, a building with a, um, a, a more, a stricter, uh, fire rating on the exterior walls, so, and there's an increase in cost associated with that. So if we can pull it five, ten, twenty, or thirty feet away, which we will be in, um, at le, you know, in the location that's proposed, then we don't have those issues.
But if, if you were to build, approach the property line and spend a little bit more money to, to update the fire, you know, to make it, I mean, is that a possibility? Because there's no, there's no structure there, that's gotta be a good, you know, a hundred yards away from the Catholic gym.
No, 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 but, but, are you talking about this area right here?
Western border?
This?
Yeah.
Uh, that's actually right Ridgeway, uh, the townhouses in, uh, Field Point, that's actually, that's actually...
Yeah, on the southern side.
Mm-mm. You're right there, right next to the...
It's not the Catholic Church property?
No. That's further down.
Thank you.
Hi, um, my name's Janet Kovacs. Um, I also just wanted to say thank you for all of you on the Building and Grounds Committee, everyone on the board, the administration, for all of your intent, um, listening to the feedback of the community as far as the, um, the first bond proposal and the location of the garage at Dow's Lane. As far as the building and the basketball court, I thought, um, listening to what Michael said about the opportunity to chime in now, um, if I could just say that, um, I wouldn't be a proponent of building a brand-new basketball court on that green space that's there by the cherry trees, because of some of the reasons Deb mentioned, it's in the sun, um, and I would be a proponent of repaving the existing basketball court. I think that, um, if we gave Deb Marinello and her team the autonomy, which I know she has already, to budget and to get creative with how she could use that space moving forward in the years to come, um, would be just a better use of, of funds. Um, to, you know, it could be so many other things still, it could be more, maybe an outdoor classroom, um, it could be used more for recess. I agree with Paula's statement about how when the aides stand there, when they are down there, they're like, they're kinda more contained, um, living in the neighborhood. Not saying anything about the recess area, but there are like kind of sketchy areas in that second and third plate, third grade areas where they get kind of far away, if you will, down by like the fences by Woodbine and Oak Street, where, um, you know, anyway. So I agree with Paula's saying, like, it is a good space, and I would, and I would hope, and I know Deb does use it, uh, Marinello, for certain events. And so I think that we can use that space, and that was some of our concern of why not to build a garage there, because it could be, it could be more, even, even though it is so much already. So that's my two cents about building a new basketball court, I just don't think we need it. Um, I think the kids unfortunately are out there, as we know, for a short amount of time anyway, and, um, to repave this area, that could be basketball, could be for, you know, trikes and scooters and other types of things, and I, my daughter, they were out there a few weeks ago, and I said, what do you do out there? And she goes, they bring balls and, you know, and hula hoops, and we just have a really good time. And, um, that's all it really should be. I get worried a brand-new basketball court, à la Cenick Hudson, would be like too, too fancy almost, if you will, like, we don't need that at a second and third grade playground. So that's my two cents on that. Um, I'd also like to say I'm flipping around on my MacBook over here, because I'm looking, and I also agree with Michael, and he says, you know, this is an opportunity for us to come up with other alternative ideas, and to share those ideas, and talk to our board members. Um, I'm looking at municipal maps, and I'm zoning in on all of these smaller maps, as you guys are talking about it, and looking at all the areas. And so it's difficult, you, you don't have a difficult, you don't have an easy task in front of you. I am in real estate, there are some lots for sale by Dow's Lane, so if anyone wants to talk about any of the properties near Dow's Lane that are for sale. And I say that a little bit in jest, but there are some properties for sale by Dow's Lane. And, um, you know, again, to look at some maybe creative, um, ways, again, forward-thinking in the future where you can, you know, collaborate with the village and the churches and some other areas where we can try to find use for shared spaces and/or, you know, if this district wants to expand and to purchase property, there is some opportunity out there, so happy to discuss further if anyone wants to do that.
We, we've talked about it.
Thank you again for everything you're doing. Thank you.
No, I mean, in our discussions with, with the various folks we've talked to, it's just that there are very long timelines to even get to a place of, is it viable, let alone being able to do anything, so, yeah.
I'm Gordon Fury. I, I used to live on Willow, and I've walked on that basketball court and around there for twenty years, every morning. But I, I'm really here just to ask, I wanted to confirm what you, I think I heard you say, which is that you are going to be able to come up with numbers for each of these alternatives. Is that right?
What's your recommend?
To, to be clear, we're gonna, we're waiting for the numbers for the location behind the high school and middle school campus. That's, that's what we're pricing out at the moment, both in terms of the size and the cost. Based on our review for the size of what we could put back there, that right now is the, the location we're looking at and waiting on numbers for.
That's the eleven hundred square foot?
Eleven hundred twenty-five.
Eleven twenty-five.
We may be, we may able to, we may be able to go larger, it may have to be smaller, but the construction manager who we retained is going to give us the numbers, because we're not gonna put this forward unless we're confident that we can build it for that amount.
So for example, with the, I'm just looking at, uh, slide ten, track and field area, the thing I was looking at against is significant, uh, con, significant drainage issues would need to be addressed. So, sure, that's a con, but really it comes down to, well, how much? So that's the kind of thing you're gonna be checking out?
Well, we, we have gone through each one of these locations and had received numbers on each one that were prohibitively expensive, and we can speak to that location in general. But, um, the, the location that the Buildings and Grounds Department feels is most viable for the cost that we're, we think should be set aside for this type of structure, is behind the high school at the moment. If the number comes back exorbitantly high, then we would go back and look at another location. But right now, based on what we're hearing from the architects and the construction manager, the location from, behind the high school is our best option.
So you're drilling down a little more, you're, you're checking in, in more detail on that one then? Okay, thank you.
Can I, can I follow up, just to clarify? Um, so that area also, with the track and field, who, we, right, um, that's the area where the work was done to build the drainage for East Field?
No, that was the staging area.
It was the staging area?
It was the staging area, it's where they kept all of the equipment?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, no work was done there.
No, but it's also, right, important for fire and emergency access, and it's also our shot put and what other area? Discuss. So you remove that area from our track and field, you have to ship your, uh, athletes back down to Dow's Lane to engage in those activities, which sort of changes the feeling of our home games, or home events.
Larry Sheps, hello? On page seven behind you, on the eastern side, there's two orange squares, correct? So why, the issue...
You talking about these?
Yeah, why not put a facility there? You said something about, Carol, about the drainage? What was, what's, what's the issue with the drainage, and what kind of structure would you put there?
Again, as Beth just talked about, we would be significantly reducing our track and field program if we did that there.
No.
Yeah, that's what, that's that spot, that's what, that's the spot.
Exact spot of the track and field right now.
That was the spot that I just asked about, where I said, was that work where East Field, where the drainage from East Field was done? And the answer was no. And then Beth, uh, trustee proper, excuse me, um, said that we would then lose, uh, they would have to relocate the track and field teams that worked, that, uh, what was the word?
Well, because in spring, track and field, you have, for your events, discuss and shot put, they, they, that's where those events are, so if that becomes the area that we're talking about for building the facilities, those events will require busing athletes down to Dow's Lane, I believe.
Which again becomes an example of what I think you said before, Michael and Maria, I'm not sure that, in, in all of these cases, there's pros and there's cons.
Right, correct.
Just a bit, just reminding people, no matter what the option is, there'll be a grown or a happy.
Right, to me, the one on the far right is in a rough, uh, very broken-up parking area, like, when I have to go up there.
No, it's what it is, is if you, if you go, I, I walk this, almost literally every day.
Yeah, there's actually no road.
You come up through the, the gate here, right here, and you go up to here's the parking lot, then there's that hill, it's a, it's a, it's a relatively, it's not steep, but it's sharp, right? Hill goes up here, then it flattens where there's, I believe there's a little more parking, there's a plateau gravel area.
There's no parking there.
This is where the, it's a field. All the way through.
And the kids practice there, right.
It's right here. So you're talking about...
And then it leads into East Field.
Right, there's a shed there now, right? Where's that shed?
There's containers.
Two storage containers.
And why couldn't we put a off-site area there to park?
That location, right, because we would take away the field. That location right now, where the storage area is, is where things are kept long-term. If you need to have daily access to it, we need to redo that road. This, this is, as, as Dave said, this is a hill here. This has never been properly graded. If we're gonna use this area to store, we lose this area for the kids in track and field, because you would have to extend this out, we would lose parking here, there's a lot, it's, it's a lot more complicated.
The difference between daily and occasional?
Right, it, it, because right now, it's only being stored, like, the summer stuff is being stored there now. So when, winter, when winter goes away, then Gary's guys will put stuff up there, that it's held for a period of time. You don't have a daily access to it. If we wanted daily access, which is what he's looking for, and quite honestly, and, and to put a truck there, uh, it, then you take away that whole area for the kids. It's gone.
But, in my mind, I haven't been there recently, but it's sort of a no-man's land where that shed is, so, and Gary now accesses that area, so if you go to that shed, it looks kinda like the end of the world for you guys. It's, it's like a, a beat-up old building, and in there is some, what's the name?
No, it's the wall block.
It's the seasonal stuff.
So if you built a storage garage there, and you put your seasonal stuff in your truck, why can't we just use that as sort of, it would seem like a logical place to put it?
Again, you would take away that entire area for the kids.
But where the shed is, the kids don't...
But no, but you would have to access it through where the kids are. There is a slope there, you would have to regrade it, you're taking away that whole area for the kids.
There's really only a dirt road there, and it would have significant drainage issues in putting a road in. And we, if you remember how much work we had to do to get the drainage proper for East Field, and, and the water that goes down into the Field Point area, it would be a significant, significant challenge for us to do that.
Right, it, it seems like if you develop that area long-term, and it opened up parking spaces and storage, cause right now, when you drive up there, you look around, it looks sort of like a no-man's land.
It's a big, it's a big grassy field right now, with, with, with cement, what are those things? Shot put, there's, there are things built there now.
They're like the, that little...
You clearly have not been there in a while.
Are they like these little stone metal things where they do, you do the, I don't wanna demonstrate, cause I'll throw my back up.
But, but again, the, the area is not paved for a reason, the student parking lot is gravel and dirt. There is no pavement up there, so we, we, we are fully aware of challenges that exist by paving that area, and that is an area that would be expensive to do that. Once we tackle that area, it becomes a bigger challenge than you realize.
Yeah, and there, there are actually drainage area, issues there, where I've had to talk to the village, cause there are burms there that are used to protect from, um, overinflux of rainwaters that go into various creeks that, believe it or not, come off of Meseros, and then go down, uh, Riverview Road, uh, and eventually lead into the Hudson. And when those aren't maintained properly, because of the drainage issues, you end up And when those aren't maintained properly because of the drainage issues, you end up with all kinds of inappropriate substances going into the freshwater areas. So, so we've seen that.
And also, it's right up against Field Point Drive, the homes on Field Point Drive, who also have had drainage issues over the years and it has been built up on the side there, a burn or.
Another burms there.
Water from going down, but a lot of the residents there have also spent a lot of money.
Because there's been a lot of erosion.
And I think it's worth pointing out that when we began the process, we did conceive of an idea that would be a centralized location. So, we looked for the best possible cost-effective centralized location and that was the basketball court at Dow's Lane. We're looking now to move away from that. So, if we're gonna go centralized, it's not gonna be in this location up at the high school because we looked at that to begin with.
Thank you. And then second question, going back to the toilet, what about putting it, incorporating it to the wall where the library is now? There's a solid wall there. What's the pros and cons of using the other side of that wall?
We can't build.
Veronica, we talked about that. Yeah. We actually discussed that, so we'll let Veronica answer that.
Can you pull up the slide?
This slide.
You talking about where?
The Dow's, recently Dow's Lane.
Nine?
Do you have a line?
Nine, yeah, there.
Talking about in here?
Down there.
Yeah, well, no, no, no. Where the library is, there's a solid wall, there's no window. So, there's a wall, where the, right around from where the outdoor classroom is, there's a solid wall that, why can't we build an attached bathroom to that wall?
Yeah, so that's absolutely one of the locations that we looked at, but you know, the, the board's concern on that is secure, the board's concern on that is security and it's really in a tucked away or hidden location that would not be ideal, you know, for access for the students.
How could it not be accessible to the students?
Well, it's accessible to the students, but it's in a tucked away location and there's security issues with it being in that location.
Well, number one, it's really in a central location because it's right by the fields. So, anyone could walk there, use the facility and then walk out. In terms of security, what kind of security issues are you talking about?
It's in a.
Identify them for me?
Sure, sure. It's in a, in a location that's tucked away, that doesn't have as much access as the other fields and playgrounds and it was a security concern.
So, if I might, just from my own concern personally, you can access this field from anywhere over here, right? Okay? So, there's a bathroom hidden in this little corner over here.
It's not hidden, it's centrally located.
You gotta come around, you gotta look down this way and it's, it's hidden for sure, right? From this view and, right?
When you gotta go, you gotta go, you'll find it.
No, I, I understood. I'm not worried about finding it, that's not the issue. The issue is, is that if kids go in there and it's unattended, someone can come from anywhere and it's not that, sometimes it's not that populated. Kids, like I've heard many people say, their kids are playing all up in here all the time and a kid goes to the bathroom, you, you just can't see, I, I don't know. It just freaks me out.
David. I've, I've lived pretty close to there for the last twenty years and it seems like an ideal location to me because it's close to all fields and it's, it's, it's kind of open right there because everyone is sitting there watching a game, they can see the bathroom and it's, there's a garden there right now. So, I don't think the issue of security is on the table here. I think the issue is, why couldn't you build on the other side of the wall? What are the other issues? Security. That was the issue that we had. I mean, ideally being closer to where the utilities already are is actually something that would be good, but.
There's water there.
That's why I just, yeah, no.
It's an ideal location, it's a solid wall.
Yeah, no, we, we looked at it. It is, it is something that, again, we will consider. But when we asked the administrators as well as, you know, athletic director in terms of where the best location was for the outdoor bathroom, the locations we put up earlier was what the response that we got.
So, you're saying the best location? I don't like using the word best.
It's because of the location of Upper Dow's, the playground. Remember, the bathroom will be used during the school day as well as on the weekend. So, there, so the, the, in order to place it in, in the best location, it was thought to be the locations we gave. We did consider and discuss attaching it to Dow's Lane in that corner as well. But we hear you, we'll, I've got your notes.
Okay. And also regarding the bathroom, it's now Saturday, okay? It's maybe Saturday night. Kids are heading over there, they know there's a bathroom, they're, might not use it, might use it. But who's gonna maintain the bathrooms on the weekend and where's that money come from? Is the school staff gonna come and clean the bathroom Saturday morning, Sunday morning? Who's responsible for going in there and doing the injury?
Right, right now, I mean, yes, that's, that is a concern that we'll have. Right now, at the high school, for example, we have to keep the high school building open on the weekend and we have to use custodial staff to do that so that they access the bathroom during events. So, we would have some savings by not having to do that so much, potentially could use that to clean the, the bathroom at Dow's Lane. But yes, it's a cost. I mean, there's always a cost of doing things that make improvements to the district. I mean, that, we have to understand that.
And we, we have called other districts that have standalone bathrooms, we've spoken to the village that has a standalone bathroom. We know that we have to install a security camera, we know that you can lock them different ways so that they can be available or not available and we do know that we have to clean them. This, it, it is an undertaking, but when we on B and G listened to the community over the last few years, we hear that this is what the community wants.
But in terms of design, since there's so many talented architects that live in town, people are design oriented, the image of that pre-fab bathroom is okay, but in our neighborhood, it should really shine, maybe with composting components, solar. I mean, like, okay, you walk into a bathroom and it's this kind of modular thing, you turn on the light, van, the vent goes on, there's a bathroom and it's sort of a common experience we all share, but if you go to a, a park in, in the federal park, there's different types of design that go into bathrooms. So, I'm saying, let's be creative, have a design competition, put it on the ba, uh, put it in the school so that, you know, everyone's all excited. How are we doing this? Solar, there's composting, it's gonna be green walls, green roof and the neighborhood and the community is coming together on this design feature and maybe an award in one of the ga, at the gala, something to make it really positive rather than dropping in an eighty-eight thousand dollar unit that in ten years will be old and we'll be looking at it differently than we look at it now.
We, we absolutely agree. I mean, the number that we put in is, is a number that we feel comfortable with at this stage that we know it will cost. That example that's depicted is certainly not the one we selected. It's the one that exists in Hastings. It's one that we've reached out and, you know, spoke to the, the custodian over there just to make sure it meets their needs, we knew it would meet our needs. But we agree on Buildings and Grounds. The design phase is not now. The way this process works is we can do a limited design, we need voter approval first, we get the funds secured and then we have the ability to do the things like you suggested.
Sounds like a plan. And Lev, I think we could all say that maybe from this meeting, the takeaway is that it's not being built on the basketball court. Please all raise our hand and say that's a great idea. I am. Let's all raise our hands and say that's a great idea. Anybody on the board going with us on this one?
I think it's a great idea.
You said to raise your hand.
I think we all think it's a great idea to try to come together and compromise for everybody's benefit.
And besides thanking the board for obviously all the good work they've done, I want to thank everybody here, give a shout out for everybody coming together and, and becoming a real community. Thank you.
Give him a hug, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Sheps.
Hi, I'm Michelle Friend. I also want to thank you. It seems like you guys have really listened over the last few weeks and have really taken into account our feedback and worked quickly to come up with some other solutions. I just want to make sure I understand, like before we walk away, I was a little bit confused when we were talking about the locations of the bathrooms and the possible locations of the bathroom and shed on Dow's Lane. Could you just describe that again? It looks like, I think that the lowest red dot.
This is the bathroom?
Yeah, that's one of, yeah, that's a proposed location for the bathroom, okay. And then also that top red dot?
Shed.
Or bathroom. Or bathroom.
Or bathroom. Or shed.
Oh, okay.
Shed or bathroom.
Okay.
Shed or bathroom.
Okay. So, those are the.
Getting good at this, Janet.
No, there's four locations.
Yeah.
One, two, three, I'm short, and four. And then possibly for the shed only, another location in here that we're exploring as well.
Okay, so you're, okay, all right. Thank you.
Sure.
Hey Janet, we're getting good at this. Competition.
James Krab.
Is there, is there a combination to the shed and bathrooms? A small shed, like things are being decentralized. I don't know if it's optimal for to have decentralized or everything house to one or two. Decentralized is better. But can we just piggyback on this toilet? Maybe shed, this modification?
We, right. We did, we did discuss that. That is one of the considerations.
So, that's not a problem to reverse those two?
No, you just have to make it big enough. That's, that's, you know.
First question. Second question. The parish street property, there was two expensive, what was two expensive?
One?
No.
Yeah, two, two.
It was over two million dollars.
Two, two, four.
The thirty-five point spread of the garage is one point seven on the flat property?
Yes.
The parish street property, mine's the beginning, kind of, they're beside that one or four. How they're, what's the issue with town? Since we're.
It has to be built in a certain way. It has to be built in a certain way.
No, they don't. My fellow ARB member. No, so it wouldn't have to go before the ARB, but our concern was to be sensitive to the fact that it would be located in the historic district. So, the design would be a little more costly. It's also a tight. Exactly, exactly. Our concrete structure, it would have to be something that blended with that street. I also think because there's constraints in the building lot, it's tight and like.
Yeah. Right, it was, it was.
Comparable.
Larger.
A little larger, it was comparable. But the, but the, also the other factor was the loss of green space as well on that street. It's, it's, it's an empty lot. It is. And if you, outdoor play space and during the comprehensive plan committee for the village, residents showed up to also express, like the Dow's Lane neighbors, that they didn't want that green space lost. But it was closer, I should say, closer to three million, right? We don't have the numbers in front of us, but it was, it was, it was almost double what Dow's.
Seven.
The space, the space in between the parking lot and the shop there?
If you can try to do it from the other angle so you're by the mic.
So, parking, parking, right? We explored this area, this was large enough for, I don't know if it was the full thirty, three thousand square feet. This area, this is the pathway to here, which I can't believe I'm suggesting this because this is all we've ever did. But this is only like a four foot drop off from here to here. Any reason why, I, I don't know the drainage concerns with everything up here, this sounded like a nightmare, this is a nightmare, but like, any reason why you can't retain here? Exit out here, any of your existing property? Like, has that been explored?
I did. Do you want to suggest?
On that hill? And so you can't construct.
No, it's a paper road and there is an agreement from long, long, long ago when they built the high school, between Field Point, the village and the school, that's a paper road and could never be altered. An easement, an easement.
And the other, the other, just to point out, there's actually.
Right. It's a, it's a paper road, it's on, on the map, it's a road, but, and it's known as Link Road. I don't know if that's what's actually on the map, but when they built the school many, many, what, two thousand, early two thousands, there is an agreement, so that can never be built up. And it is also an emergency access as well, right? What?
You have one at Square Park too, that emergency access that goes directly to Square Park, that's closed now. So, it's the same thing with the deaf community, the people who aren't here, they're not here to talk about, but.
Yep, thank you.
Any other feedback for us to consider?
I'm sorry, can you come closer to the mic and say that again? Say your name?
Randall Yang.
Randall Yang.
Okay, so that, that one that we were just talking about, how big was that proposing?
Which one?
The little box that.
In the parking lot?
In the parking lot, that you guys, I mean, that you're all in a box, right? Next to the paper road.
Thirty-five hundred square feet.
Okay, so, and that was.
No, the, the, part of the issue with this location is that the school district's property line is literally right along here.
Well, you know, the field point, that's gonna be.
Yeah.
The hour, just like we are.
There's, there's actually drainage here and underneath the parking lot here is a detention pond. So, again, that's another, that's a structure that was recently constructed to resolve the drainage issues on the property and that would have to be some, like, you know, relocated somewhere.
And really, unfortunately, the parking is a big concern. We, we are desperate for parking at the campus. And know that something is already being proposed to be built there. That orange square, there's already something being proposed to be built there.
That one, the one in the parking lot.
Right.
And remember, if you take away parking, what happens to the Cedar Ridge neighborhood and upper Field Point is people start parking their cars on the streets and blocking driveways and it becomes a crazy mess down there and then you've got two, two other neighborhoods that complain. No, I'm just saying that.
So, the replacement shed is eighty-eight thousand? And the bathroom is eighty-eight thousand?
No, it's more than that.
More.
I think, I think the number was about two hundred thousand that we budgeted. Yeah, I think we're still keeping that allowance in there. That's more, that was the more for shed.
That's because it has all the water and all.
No, for the, the shed would be about eighty-eight thousand because we wouldn't be putting in any, except for maybe electrical to put a light on.
Right.
Long-term, eighty-eight thousand dollars, it doesn't matter the last fifteen years, eighty-eight thousand dollars, building other shit twenty years. Something's there.
No question.
Newer technology and other stuff. A bathroom, I think, I know, Dow's Lane Fields. I think it's a people's difference through the problem that you can make all this and other people here that aren't there now and I, it's hilarious for the bathroom.
We'll have the ability to lock the bathroom at night. We can control it. We can.
We have custodians here on staff in the evenings.
Yeah.
So, it's easily.
They give the bathrooms on Memorial Field.
They lock them down too.
They might do.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone else have any other questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask about the parish street. That would be a lot closer to residential housing than anything that's proposed to Dow's Lane. So, I think people should be aware of that. Like, you know, there are other communities in Irvington and, and I think if you have the same resolve, if you propose it there at a later meeting, except these people are near.
We were, we were concerned about the neighborhood as well as the fact that the police department is there and Irvington Town Hall Theater. We looked at it nonetheless because we recognize it's school district property and it could accommodate all our needs, but we, we ruled it out once we got the price.
Going once, going twice. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, I, I, just as a quick update, I guess we're, we're talking about our, at our March fifth possibly having an update or would it, we're still, we'll, we'll send out an announcement like we did before when we have an update. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our next meeting is indeed Tuesday, March fifth and our proposed presentation is around curriculum for our annual budget. Thank you, Ms. Bernstein, for reminding us all.
He's on the village board.
That's fine.
Personnel and impending litigation?
So moved?